Good morning, everybody. We'll call to order our January 7th, 2020, regular meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners. We'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And moving on to item number three. If the clerk would please take role.
Commissioner District One, Randy Nederlund.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to item number four, Correspondence and Organizational Business. We're going to make a quick adjustment to item number four. We're going to have a new item 4.1 and ask Ross McDowell from our Department of Emergency Management to come up and make an announcement on the Skokelake Valley.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ross McDowell, Mason County Emergency Management Manager. As you know, we have had some flooding going on this last couple of days, and the Skokelake Valley Road has been closed. We have been using our normal evacuation route over Green Diamonds Road, the 800-808, 808 Road. This morning, we were just informed there was a slide on the 800 Road, making that road impassable. So, we are currently closing down the evacuation road, posting signs, and hopefully we'll hear shortly from Green Diamond an ETA on maybe the cleanup or reopening of the 800 Road. So, wanted to make sure people know that. We will send out other news and other notifications through social media. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ross. Appreciate you.
And I believe Public Works will be putting up reader boards and letting other folks know along the roadway.
Correct. Right. Public Works will be putting up reader boards so that they know that that has been closed at this time.
Ross, is perhaps a reminder about Alert Sense? One more reminder.
One more reminder about Alert Sense. That seems to be our biggest ally. Alert Sense is our warning system that we have. It can come to you via telephone, via cellphone, via text message, via email, everything but carrier pigeon. It will come to you. We need you to sign up for it. We need people to sign for it. Get in, get us your cellphone number. There's a form that you can go right onto the county webpage, fill it out, it'll ship it right to us, and we will get you in there. If you're in the Skokelake Valley, make sure you mark the one that says Skokelake Valley. There's some other options that are there, too, but that'll get those emergency messages to you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And we'll continue to communicate via social media and our website as well when we have updates.
That's correct. Thank you.
Very good. Very good, thank you. Moving on to item 4.2, Correspondence. If the clerk would please report the correspondence.
Catherine Abernathy Robinson submitted an application for the Lewis Basin-Thurston Area Agency on Aging. The United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs sent notice to have the following real property put into trust. Parcel numbers 31914-2490032, 31914-4080840, and 31914-1080830. Tim Lincoln sent in an application for the Transportation Improvement Program Citizen Advisory Panel, or TIPCAP, and we received a letter of closure regarding the National Flood Insurance Program 2012 Community Assistance Visit, CAV, from FEMA.
Very good, thank you. Moving on to item 4.3, Selection of Chair and Vice Chair. At this time, we will open nominations for Chair for 2020. Commissioner Nederlund.
Mr. Chair, it's time that we rotate sitting. We have a Commissioner that has yet to sit in that chair, and I'd like to nominate Sharon Trask to take her turn at the wheel of the ship.
Very good. And I will second that nomination. Commissioner Trask, do you accept?
I'll accept.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Good luck.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You can't vote against.
Oh.
Yeah.
And with that, I will transfer the gavel to Commissioner Trask to continue with nomination and selection of our Vice Chair.
Okay, so now we'll open up selection of our Vice Chair. Do I hear any nominations?
Madam Chair, I nominate Commissioner Nederlund to serve as Vice Chair for 2020.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. I'll second that. And do I hear any opposition or any other nominations? No? Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hope so. You already said you can't vote. No, thank you.
All right.
Congratulations.
Welcome to Vice Chair. Well, this is exciting. Yeah. Let's move on.
Did you pass her the target?
I hear this is what I beat you guys with after.
Get in line.
Okay. If you could read, or if we have, if we ask Diane or staff to come forward for item 4.4, Public Works Bid Award Information.
Good morning, Commissioners. On April 23rd, 2019, Mason County Commissioners authorized Public Works to advertise an award for the Belfair Connector Romance Hill CRP 2019 Design not to exceed $350,000. Public Works advertised and awarded the contract to Skilling's Connolly, Inc. of Lacey, Washington in an amount not to exceed $315,000.
Okay, now we move on to item five. This is open forum for citizen input, three minutes per person, 15 minutes time limit. So, if you'd like, come to forward, raise your hand, the Chair will recognize you. Come forward to the podium, state your name and your address and, yes.
My name is Bob Stone, and I live at 2917 East Brockdale Road, which is too close to McQuinn Prairie Road. I speak as a member of the Mason County citizens who see the urban growth plan as an infringement on our choice of where we want to live. Many of us have chosen to live in Mason County in contrast to living in the city of Shelton, and it seems like the city of Shelton wishes to encroach on the rights of us who prefer to live in a county comparison to the city. I spoke against this in October, November of 1995, when the plans started coming forward. I'm still planning to get outside legal help if necessary to fight this. For 40 years, I have lived peacefully outside the city of Mason County, the city in Mason County, obeying the rules and set forth by the county. For this, I have good water from a well that serves three homes and one business and a decent road. For all this, I pay $25. My septic is approved. My garbage runs $11.50, and I do my own recycling. For the city to do all this, it costs a whole lot more. People leave the city because of the high cost. The so-called projects that citizens need are not paid for by the citizens, thus increasing the citizens' costs while the city pockets the money for taxes. I read where the city claims the land is important because it's considered a point of entry into the city. The city wants the land for tax purposes only. Everything possible has been taxed for the privilege of living in Shelton. So, these people flee the city and live in a county to escape these extra taxes. If the county approves its expansion of the Shelton UGA, I have no choice but to fight any legal way I can. I will not live in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if you're here to testify on something or to speak about something that's on the agenda, we'll ask that you hold that until the hearing. Do we have anyone else that would like to say something that's not on the agenda? Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's the most wonderful time of the year. Does anybody know what I'm talking about?
Tax season.
Tax season. Commissioner Schutte, got it. This year, we are offering through AARP Tax Aid, so we will do anybody's return for free, and these are the hours that we're operating. Tuesday, from 10:00 to 4 o'clock, starting in February, we'll be at the North Mason Library. Wednesdays, from 10:00 to 4:00, we'll be at the Senior Center in Shelton, and you need to call for an appointment there. The number is 427-7374. On Saturdays, from 10:00 to 3:00, we'll be at the Shelton Library. And new this year, Commissioner Schutte, we will be at the Hootsport Library the second Thursday of each month from 1:00 to 4:00. So, everybody come out and get your taxes done. Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. Do we have anyone else that would like to come up? No? All right, we'll move on to item six, Adoption of Today's Agenda.
Madam Chair, I move approval of today's agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda for today, July 7th, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted. Moving on to item seven, Approval of the Minutes for September 16th, 2019, Briefing Minutes, November 26th, and December 17th, 2019, Regular Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the Minutes for December 16th, 2019, which are briefing minutes, November 26th, and December 17th, Regular Meeting Minutes as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, this is Approval of the Action Agenda as Written. I will read items 1.1 through 1.3. Commissioner Nederlund, if you could read item 8.4 through 8. ... Oh, nope, wait a minute. I was reading on our item 8.1 and 8.2. Commissioner Nederlund, if you could read 8.3 and 8.4, and Commissioner Schutte, 8.5. Item 8.1, Approval to Reappoint Don Poggebra ... My goodness, Poggebra? Thank you.
Say, welcome to the world for the residents. I have the same problem.
Mark Carlson, Jeff Carey, Jack Johnson, and Pete Budkas to a two-year term on the Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Panel, also known as TIPCAP. Item 8.2, Approval to Authorize Public Works to Solicit for On-Call Commercial Electrical Services for 2020 through 2022, and Approval to Allow the Deputy Director of Utilities and Waste Management to Sign the Contract. The maximum payout is not to exceed $50,000 per year.
Madam Chair, item number 8.3 reads, Approval of Warrants and Treasuries to Electronics Remittance. Claims Clearing Fund, warrants number 806-9057 through 806-9570, the amount $2,143,250.53. Direct Deposit Funds, warrants number 64565 through 64943, the amount $709,473.26. Salary Clearing Fund, warrants number 7004890 through 7004915, the amount $494,301.8. Madam Chair, item number 8.4 reads, Approval to Authorize the Department of Emergency Management to Sign and Complete Contract E20-183 to Close the Fiscal Year 18 State Homeland Security Program Grant.
Item 8.5, Approval to Adopt a Resolution Amending Resolution 89-19 Mason County Personnel Policy to Amend Chapter 7.9, Washington-Paid Family and Medical Leave, and Chapter 8.5, No Smoking Policy, Replacing Language and Compliance with the RCWs Governing Each Chapter.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Madam Chair.
What's the next step?
My, no, that's good. What I want to do is just ask if we have any items that they'd like to be pulled from the agenda or any questions that would help them.
Thank you. Do we have any items that would, that need to be pulled from the agenda, or do we have any questions on the agenda from the audience? Seeing none?
I have none.
No? Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the Action Agenda?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the Action Agenda as Presented, items 8.1 through 5.
I will second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to approve the Action Agenda as Written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Just to comment, Madam Chair, we all had to start and do our first one. Welcome to the club. You're doing fine.
Well, and I think it's true. The moisture leaves your mouth and drops to your armpits.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
That was new.
I was thinking about, remember the shrammies?
Yeah.
That'd be kind of fun. End of year. Moving on to item number nine, do we have any department heads or elected officials with other business? No? All right. Are you sure? All right, so we are now past 9:15, so we can move into our public hearings. We will move on to item 10.1. This is a public hearing to consider the expansion of 600 acres into the Shelton Urban Growth Area, the UGA. We would ask staff to come forward and brief.
Good morning. Kel Rowan with Mason County Planning Department. So, back in 2013, the city of Shelton started updating their comprehensive plan, and then finally, in December of 2017, they adopted that plan, and it included a 600-acre, or approximately 600-acre, expansion of the Shelton Urban Growth Area in the northwest corner of the city of Shelton and the existing urban growth area. And so, they adopted that in December of 2017, and it is not effective until the county does the same. And so, the county, we have had some transitions, some other things, so here's, two years have gone by, but it's essentially the same product, and we are now here to adopt the expansion of the Shelton Urban Growth Area. This 600 acres is comprised of three different property owners. There is an existing commercial business, but the majority of it is undeveloped. The zoning designation will be commercial-industrial, and the majority of the designation will be industrial with a smaller portion being commercial. And it is, it does, the property lies north and south of the Dayton Airport Road. And if anyone has any questions, we're happy to take those. Any question?
Yeah, quick question. So, Kel, appreciate the background on this. Can you just, for clarity, what's the city's role in this? Did you say that the council had to adopt this, and have they already?
Yes, so in December of 2017, the city of Shelton adopted, they were still a commission board at that time, they did adopt their comprehensive plan, which included this growth expansion of their urban growth area. This followed a final environmental impact statement. So, an environmental impact statement was drafted and then completed in 2017. It included this expansion as well as other areas of their comprehensive plan amendment.
Great. Any other questions for staff? Do we have anyone in the audience that would have some questions?
That's a rare one, though.
The, Kel, thanks. Does this, does this expansion, is the county approving not only the Dayton Airport Road expansion, but the Goldsboro Heights as well, that the city?
We are not. So, we did not include that. We did consult with the city, because some time had gone by since 2017. I did meet with the city, there is a city representative here today, and we decided not to include the Goldsboro portion.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And do we have any further questions? No? Thank you. Okay, now is the time, if you are here to testify, or if you'd like to be heard for this, during this hearing, for you to raise your hand, and I will call on you, come up, state your name, and you can testify. Anyone? Yes.
Hello, my name is Monty Ritter. I live in the Shelton Urban Growth Area, and it just, I remember back in 2005, I was on a Citizens Advisory Committee for the city of Shelton. It was with their Parks Department, and back at the time, we were having a hard time with figuring out what the Shelton Urban Growth Area at that point was, and I just remember that there was a large moratorium on construction in Mason County that had been placed on us because we were not in compliance with the urban growth, the Growth Management Act, which we were one of two counties in Washington State that was not in compliance because we had not yet approved the perimeters of our urban growth areas. And since we weren't in compliance, our growth management plan had not been approved, moratorium on construction and all this, and everybody in the state was really upset with Mason County and another county because the feds had placed sanctions on some state funding, or some fed fundings for state projects. So, I encourage the board to consider the ramifications, not just for the owners in this area who may be personally affected, but how this decision affects everybody in Mason County, even those who are not in this specific area. Thank you.
If I may, just a quick question, Monty. What do you think the ramifications would be?
Okay, what happened last time is, we, because the Growth Management Act specifically states that every state has to accept a certain population growth goal, that we have to prepare for this development, and every county has to share in the burden of future growth. So, we had, we had the burden of preparing for this growth, which means we have to put in the infrastructure that allows this growth. So, what the city is doing and has done, apparently with all their decision-making to this point, is say, this is the best for putting infrastructure forward to have an area that does, it doesn't mean it will grow, doesn't mean anybody's going to purchase houses there or do any of this, but at least we have, on paper, done our part, which is provide the opportunity for growth, and that at least says that we've done our part to the state and to the feds, and whether it happens or not doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Do we have any further comment? No? Okay. Should we move on to a motion?
Do you have any deliberations?
Or discussion?
Yeah. I'll go ahead and explain a little more history on it. As a Commissioner that's been here for a while, that is how it did come back, but this was originally brought forward some years back because there was a study done with the EDC that found that we did not have much in the way of buildable lands for commercial-industrial. They did a survey and found all of our lands are mostly up north, which we didn't have the access to and didn't have the infrastructure. Down here, we have lands that are available, but they're for lease. Now, the port has since allowed for some, opened their mind to purchases, but the original catalyst for this was that. And then, the landowners at the time were very interested in moving forward. I want to let you know, though, there are some downsides to this. Right now, we have a situation with the city where they're very eager to take lands, and we lose it in our tax base. So, let's, you know, be honest about that, and that's a danger when we do this. But at the same time, all of us benefit if we can create commercial-industrial land so that more businesses can come in, because there's a huge amount of businesses that do look to relocate that do not want to lease their land. They want to be able to buy it. And as we've talked about in our briefings, right now, the only thing we have to work with for our planning is Belfair without this. So, I'll be speaking in favor of it when the time comes. I do wish that gentleman did not leave, because I'd like to ask him what part he thinks is going to interfere with him, because I think he may be mistaken where he thinks it's going to happen. Where, do you see him?
He left.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, he left. Yeah, and, but McCureen Prairie and back on that area, I think he had a misunderstanding of where it's going to be, unless I'm mistaken. This is down just towards, going towards the prison out there. All those lands that have been open, right now, there is a water system that has a latecomer process that needs to have these customers if it's a possibility. And again, it's the only one that we have that is, except for the lands we just opened up through our process of surplus. It's the only lands we're going to have up here, and so, I'll be speaking in favor of it.
Yeah, I will as, well, you know, it's a, I also believe this is in our Opportunity Zone area, so this is, this is an area that is primed for development, unless we don't do anything, then, you know, then we won't experience the kind of economic growth that we need, especially in the areas where it's intended. And this is, this is an area where it's intended. It's adjacent to the port, it's along, it's along a corridor that has been, that utilities are being provided to, and so, this makes sense from a planning perspective and from an economic development perspective as well. And it's not in the area of Brockdale and McQuinn Prairie.
Yeah, and I do want to let you know, I did contact, I was in contact last night with Commissioner Buck, and her only concern, her question was, is it going to be residential? And if it's not residential, she's worried if you put residential there, they're going to be complaining about the aircraft and try to close down that airport. And we're not looking at residential, I wanted to put that out there. So, from her concerns, after being addressed, she didn't have any issue with it as well.
Sure. Madam Chair, I move approval of the UGA, of the UGA expansion of 600 acres in parcel number 42003-00-0000, 42003-31-00020, and 42003-31-00030, and establish zoning as general commercial and industrial as shown on the city of Shelton's future land use map.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the UGA expansion of 600 acres, parcel number 42003-00-0000, and 42003-31-00020, and 42003-31-00030, and establish zoning as general, commercial, and industrial as shown on the city of Shelton's future land use map. All in favor?
I do have one pointed discussion, and this is just to our friends that are here from the city, just want to acknowledge Jason Doss, Mark Ziegler, and Councilmember Eric Anisco, who are here and have put time and effort into this. Councilmember, don't take it from us for a while.
Actually, I was going to say the exact same thing, so I'll take his comment. Please understand that's the same as what I'm hoping.
Give us a chance.
Yeah.
Can I second that one? Or third it? All right, any more, any further discussion? No? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Bring some businesses there, guys.
Yes, thank you guys for coming. All right, moving on to item 10.2. This is a public hearing to consider a code amendment to Mason County Code, Chapter 6.72, Section 0, or Point 030, adding section I, Solid Waste Flow Control, and ask staff to come forward to present.
Madam Chair, if I may pass the baton to our solid waste manager, Zach. He says that he wants to practice a little bit of this.
It's our. Morning, Commissioner. I'm the solid waste program manager. My first time, too.
Would you like some water?
I've been bringing due to flow control. The county's been working on this for a long time. It's been talked about a few times. I think it's a good asset for the county for revenue and source. We're losing about 5,400 tons to Kitsap County right now. We've met with Mason County garbage on this, as well as the UTC, talked about the issues. It will bring additional 5,400 tons, 3,400 of that tons is commercial and your, your commercial routes, and then 20,000 tons of that is roll-offs, which is boxes that remove off and on the trucks. They, the operation impact was, we will increase volume on Mondays at my facility in Shelton. I do think I can handle that, that volume. It will increase distance for Mason County garbage to haul material from the north side of the county back here to this location. Like I said, we did talk to them about that. They do do some adjustments to their, their process of hauling the material. They did ask us to hold off a little longer, and then we were agreeing to that. It's gonna increase rates, garbage rates, for the pickup for the whole entire county as a whole, not just the north county. They, if we do move forward with flow control, they, Mason County garbage will go to the UTC, and it definitely takes 45 days for them to get an answer back on rates. We do not know the rate increase at this point in time. We have a range of what they may be, but we're not 100% sure. It'd be, we would use these funds to update Belfair, Sandhill, to possibly take more volume, and use a big part of that for safety for all locations. A big part of it is, my, my number one goal is safety at all facilities, so this would definitely help get a safety spotter and do some other safety upgrades at that point as well. The solid waste staff is recommending that we move forward with this for the, it'd be additional income to the 402 account for $212,700 is the estimated increase for the year, each year.
Do we have any questions?
Yeah, just a point of clarification, Zach, if you don't mind, just for folks that might not be as familiar. Can you talk a little bit about what commercial means? Sometimes it's not commercial, it's just, you know, like a business, solid waste versus residential. Just maybe give a little background on that.
For sure. So the commercial side of it and the route trucks, I look at that as all commercial, because I see it coming as commercial, but it's not all that. So the, what we have for the 3,400 tons is all your businesses, all the, your stores, any kind of, trying to think of how to get examples, your, all the route trucks, I'm assuming you're right on the route truck situation. Some of the residential, that's commercial to me, too, but that's all the, there's curbside pickup at that point. The 2,000 pounds is curbside pickup, and then the rest is your, all your, all your commercial pickup, which is Safeway, or, excuse me, KOC, your Dairy Queen, all those sites. I don't know all the stops they do, but it's mainly your big commercial is all those 3,400 tons, just coming from that side of it.
And then, to be clear, in the, in the briefing here, there are two, there are two types. There's the commercial customer only, and then the commercial and residential. Is staff making a recommendation on?
Doing both.
Okay.
Doing both, we would like to do both.
Okay.
Staff is recommending on April 1 to start both.
Okay. And then have we, we budgeted for this increase in rev, did we anticipate?
No, we did not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any questions for staff from our audience? No? Sorry, I'm nervous, guys.
You did great.
I know, there's so much more there, but.
All right, thank you. Okay, do we have further discussion on item 10.2? More motion? Oh, do we have any questions for, or testimony from the audience? From anyone in the audience? Yes. Thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Del Roy Cox, and I'm a member of the SWAC committee. And, you know, I just, there was, I believe it was 100% support of the SWAC. I think it's a move that is, that, you know, there might be a slight increase to implement the program, but after the program is implemented, I think it'll give the county stability. There's substantial capital improvements to be done at the facility, and what you're, you're securing your, your waste stream, and it'll give you a more stable base and to fund your programs, and, and I think it, the language that I think was adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments? Testimony? No? Seeing none? Do we have a?
Madam Chair, I'll make the first motion. Madam Chair, I move that we amend Mason County Code, Chapter 6.72, Section Point 030, adding Section 1, Solid Waste Flow Control.
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to amend the Mason County Code, Chapter 6.72, Section Point 030, adding Section 1, Solid Waste Flow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Do we have another motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval for the chair to sign an interlocal agreement after it's signed by Kitsap County, after signed by Kitsap between Mason and Kitsap Counties enacting solid waste flow control effective April 1, 2020.
I'll second, and I have a comment.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just to let you know, we were in contact with Kitsap County as well. This is not being sprung on them. The staff has as well, but we also took the commission, and they were supportive of this. And one of the greatest benefits that I see of this is the idea to start to invest into our infrastructure, in our, our solid waste sites that are outside of the City of Shelton. We have had shortcomings up in Belfair. That's why they end up have to take their stuff into Kitsap County. To be able to invest and bring scales and a few other things is gonna benefit everybody so they can just bring it down the road to their local receptacle site. Same thing would go for down in Yuguen, and that kind of investment, so they can stay home and do things right in front of where they live, I think is important and well worth the, the effort that we're putting into this. And I want to thank the SWAC, and I want to thank Republic for all your help and guidance to help us get there, and as well as our staff. And you rock, there's no way around it. We appreciate you.
Anything else?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. Just again, a word of thanks to our staff for working on this. I know there was a lot of conversation that went with Waste Connections, including, you know, our members of the SWAC. I heard from one of those members here just a couple of minutes ago. This is a, this is a, I think, an issue that we've debated internally for a couple of years, at least since I've been here. I know it's come up in the past, prior to my time here, and I think we, we wouldn't have been able to get here without that collaboration between all parties. And so I just, I tip my hat to everybody that did put effort into this. Appreciate Commissioner Netherland's willingness and ability to reach out to our neighbors in Kitsap County and getting their buy-in on this. This is a decision that is not made unilaterally, and so we're really grateful for the effort that everybody put into it, and I think that's ultimately how we got to where we are today. As Commissioner Netherland also said, we do have a lot of obligations at our, at our transfer stations that we need to, that we need to fulfill. And that's gonna be good for Waste Connections, that's gonna be good for Republic, but it's gonna be really good for the self-haulers as well. Our constituents that, that don't have curbside service, that rely on their transfer stations to be safe, you know, depositories of their trash, and, you know, and this has been a long time coming, in order for us to find a way to capture the revenue in a way that doesn't increase rates to the point that it, that it breaks our constituents' backs. And so looking forward to staff coming forward with bigger conversation now on what investments we need to make, and working with our SWAC and our, our solid waste partners on that, so that we put the money where it needs to be in order to get our constituents exactly what they need at these transfer stations. So my thanks to everybody.
I'd like to second what, what they said, but also, I toured the, the facilities that we have, and I've also been out to the Thurston County facility, and I have to tell you, Thurston County, they rock, man. They're just amazing. There's safety, there's, it's very convenient in and out, quick flows, and I know that we'll get there, and this is going to help us get there. So I'm, I'm excited to see the progress that Mason County is making. I think there's a bright light, and we're on our way. So, thank you, staff, and thank you, guys, too. All right. So we've got a motion and a second to allow the chair to sign an interlocal agreement after signed by Kitsap between Mason and Kitsap Counties enacting solid waste flow control effective April 1, 2020. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Sweet. Okay, moving on to item 10.3. This is a public hearing to consider approving the franchise agreement applications between Mason County and the following water systems. Emerald Lake Community Club Incorporated, Lake Christine Community Club, Lakeland Village Water Company, PUD Number 1, Timberlake's Community, Community Club, Clifton Beach Tracks Co-op Water Association, Camilche Shores Community Association, Paradise Service Association, To Huya River Valley Water District, and ask staff to come forward.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Diane Chisley of Public Works, and this is the second in a series of, we're doing the bundled water system franchises. There will be more. We have a lot of franchises, but these are, they're really renewals of franchises, but instead of just renewing them, we're updating some language about the renewals so that they automatically happen. Water systems last for years and years and years, so there's not a good reason to have every time they come due to not just automatically renew if everything's going well. So that's the, just any questions?
Any questions? Do we have any questions for staff? No? Do we have anyone that would like to come forward to testify on this? No? Seeing none?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the franchise agreement application between Mason County and Emerald Lake Community Club Incorporated, Clifton Beach Tracks Co-op Water Association, Lake Christine Community Club, Camilche Shores Community Association, Lakeland Village Water Company, Paradise Service Association, PUD 1, To Huya River Valley Water District, and Timberlake Community Club granting permission to run the utility lines under and across county road right-of-ways.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the franchise agreement applications between Mason County and Emerald Lake Community Club Incorporated, Clifton Beach Tracks Co-op Water Association, Lake Christine Community Club, Camilche Shores Community Association, Lakeland Village Water Company, Paradise Service Association, PUD 1, To Huya River Valley Water District, and Timberlake Community Club granting permission to run the utility lines under and across county road right-of-way. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
I would like to make a comment. For those that are on the audience, our process has been streamlined greatly by our staff doing it this way. Just think about it, you could have been sitting here individually for every one of those over the last so many months. So thank you very much for doing it the way you, that you've changed it. From all of us, thank you.
All of us do thank you. All right, that concludes our hearings. We'll move on to item 11, Board Reports and Calendar. We could have Commissioner Schuett go first, Commissioner Netherland, and then I'll follow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things on the schedule this week. I have the opioid stakeholder meeting tomorrow. Also have a law enforcement assisted diversion meeting. I'll be in our Wyra 14 watershed planning meeting. Then I also have a meeting with Scott Brewer from the Hood County Coordinating Council, and then Friday, I'll be working with the State Building Co-Council in Olympia, back Monday for briefings.
Okay, I myself, we've had, since we've met, we, we did come together for a few things, just to make sure it's on the record. Mason Transit Authority, we attended the Women's Republic, we're both there together. I also met with Audit Committee. We had a briefings. I met with different members, including the Director of Public Works, to go over a few things. We had the retirement of Kathy. I also met with constituents in regards to permitting, in regards to different construction projects, and in regards to the gravel mine. I have a meeting right after this with Judge Goodell. I have a meeting tomorrow with the Left Board, Economic Development Council next after that, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority. Audit Committee meets again. We have our briefing, then I meet with Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority's Finance Committee, and that brings us back, and we do it all over again.
All right. Well, tonight, I'll, I'll be attending the city council meeting. They have some things going on there, so if you're interested, show up at 6:00. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the emergency management planning meeting, and then, because session is starting up again, I will be spending a lot of time in Olympia. Wednesday night, we have a roundtable for Washington State Association of Counties, and then an LSC meeting, which is the Legislative Steering Committee for WASAC. And then Turning Point Board meetings, Public Works Board on Friday, and Saturday's a big game for my husband and I, the 49er Viking game, and.
For those of you who don't know, that, they, they really have issues one way or the other within their house. I would, I would like to have a camera to see how much food gets thrown at each other during that one. Sorry, Commissioner.
It'll be, well, any cleaning, it's gonna be. And then we're back on Monday for our county briefing. All right.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
We're adjourned.
Good job, Commissioner.